All rise. From Monday, February 11th, 2013, South Bend, California, the invocation by Father David Raphael. Let us bow our heads and pray for God's blessing. My God, all things are here making all kinds and seasons to obey your laws. You chose to create us in your own image, sending us over the whole world in all its wonder. You have made us the stewards of creation, to praise you day by day, for the marvels of your generosity and your love. But with favor on our common council, mercifully pour out upon it the wisdom of your spirit, that it may decide everything for the well-being and peace of all of the citizens and residents of South Bend. Amen. Before we turn around, may I have the Girl Scouts of Northern Indiana come up here, right up here, led by Jill Thompson? And they will now lead us in the pledge.
Mr. Henry Davis. Mrs. Shea. Dr. Phillix. Dr. Varner. Vice President Davis. Councilmember White. Mr. Phillix. President Deere. May I present? May I have the report from the South Committee on Minutes? To the common council of the city of South Bend, the subcommittee has inspected the minutes of the January 28th, 2013 meeting of the council, and found them to be correct. Therefore, we recommend the same be approved, signed by Eric Deere, David Varner. May I motion to accept the minutes as second? We have a second motion. Under special business, I would like to turn it over to councilmember Shea, regarding a fire that happened in South Bend over the weekend.
I would like everyone to rise in prayer. This weekend, there was a horrible tragedy on Haiti Street, a house fire claimed the lives of two young children, and have left the family without a home to return to. So, I would like to bow our heads in prayer, to honor the children that, whose lives were lost, and the family that has been a victim. Dear Lord, thank you so much for the blessings you have blessed us with. Please continue to guide us in your way, and help us to make choices that honor your name. Please be with the victims of the tragedy that took place on Haiti Street yesterday. Please be with and guide this family as they walk to rebuild their lives in the weeks and months to come. Amen.
Proceed to special business. This is the mayor's annual address to the city council, pursuant to Section 2-3.1 of the South Bend Municipal Code. Thank you. Mayor, the podium is yours. Thank you, good evening. You said the municipal code provides that the mayor will... Why did you hear it? We wanted to be sure we had paper copies as well as electronic copies. Councilmen and women depending on their preference for how to receive the information, so we can be sure you got them. Hard copy, but great to see that the council is becoming more high tech. The South Bend Municipal Code calls annually for the mayor to provide counsel with an update on the finances and general condition of the city. This report has been prepared in order to provide that update. This is considered separate from the State and the City Address, which will be scheduled for public events later on this spring, a date to be announced in March. First thing I'd like to draw your attention to is an overall statement of the time series as we look at the financial flows coming into the city and the expenditures going out of the city's funds over the course of the last five years. I'd like to note that we are finally beginning to be able to get a picture of how our finances have looked on an apples-to-apples basis over time since the passive property tax caps that substantially impacted our funding. Now, it still remains the case, as you look back into the historical data, that some of the '09 and even more than that, the '08 data, is going to look a little bit different from the last two years. But overall, we're effectively dealing with the same funding reality now across these years. There's one other big exception to that, so let me draw your attention to now, because you'll see it in several of the slides going forward. That is, as you will recall, there was a delay in the admission of property tax payments to the city, really the county and state, that took place in 2008. So, when you're looking at those 2008, 2009 numbers, it's helpful almost to imagine adding the two and bup, dividing them by two, to see it was 33 million, for example, in the general fund in 2008, plus a 96% to 2009, before leveling off to a number more or less like this, over the years. So, that wasn't actually a real change in the level of funding in the city, so much as it was an artifact of the timing, some of those payments had to come in after the new year passed. I just want to make sure members are clear on that, so that the fluctuations in '08 don't act like they're overstated. We go to the next slide. Now, here you see a time series again, showing you the revenue coming into the city of South Bend, broken it out among the different types of funds. As you know, there's a dizzying array of funds if you look at the spreadsheets that we produce in order to comply with state accounting. But they essentially break into six categories: the general fund, which is the discretionary fund, that gets the lion's share of our attention during the budget season; special revenue, which includes motor vehicle highway fund, some parks and recreation funding, some federal funding, like the UDAC money that was coming in in previous years; a debt and capital projects fund; enterprise funds, which is principally driven by the sewer and wastewater and water utilities; pension and trust funds, and then lastly redevelopment, which in this case reflects principally TIPS. Thank you, Clark, for the board. You would notice the biggest shift on here is that there's an increase in revenue on enterprise funds, but I don't want to create the impression that we have become suddenly more profitable, or profitable at all in the delivery of the sewer and water service. What you're seeing is, as the city prepares to comply with the 20-year, $500-some-million CSO company mandate, it's been necessary to issue bonds, and you're seeing the revenue side of those bond issues, which accounts for the increase in 2011, 2012, we've seen that, put one twenty bars in the enterprise funds category. This is the same breakout, but using that bucketing of the different fund types in order to render the expenditures that are going out. Again, if you look at the debt and capital projects fund, that's where you're seeing co-ideated parts of capital, major moves expenditures, whereas a lot of the TIPS and economic development funding is supplemental to the general fund you see on the far right redevelopment column. The bottom line is that when it comes to the general fund, we are operating in a steady state, and you're not going to see big increases or decreases across the last five years, and we would expect that trend to continue. The other funds are more sensitive to surpluses that may come in, rises and falls in grant funding, or again, in the case of the enterprise funds, a major project like the long-term control plants. I just wanted to roll all those up for you and give you a sense of the time series. You'll find that in recent years, the city has, at the end of the year, been shown to spend less money than it takes in. That was certainly the case in the first full year that this council and administration had been in office, working off the budget that was passed in 2011. When you look at the budget numbers, sometimes it can actually initially look like we're going to spend more than we take in, but when you actually get to the actuals, it's generally the reverse. The exception, again, 2008, that's driven by an artifact of the stack of payments between when we received funding through the county, Interstate in 2008 versus 2011. You also notice that actual spending last year was slightly down from total city spending in 2011. Up to the next slide. This is zooming in from the overall view. I've shown you on the general fund, since it's the general fund that generally gets the most attention in public, the council and the by offices, we go in the budget season. Again, what you're seeing is that discretionary spending has been steady over the last five years, slight increase from 61.4 million to 63.4 million, as you go from 2011 to last year's average. And again, I counsel you to disregard this link, and imagine a dot right about in between the 2008 and 2009 dots, to more accurately reflect the long-term reality of the funding that is coming in. I wanted to really pause and look in detail at 2012 now, so as opposed to some of the last readouts, where we were looking at city funds over a five-year period, I wanted to give you a snapshot of 2012, and give you a sense of the sources of funding that are coming in. Property taxes, of course, account for the majority of the, or the plurality of the funds that come in, 72.9 million was collected in 2012, which accounts for about a quarter of all the funding that comes in the city. The next is charges for services, and the vast majority of this would be water, wastewater, garbage collection, building. So, that's generally going to be pretty closely matched up to the expenditures on those services, and you can almost think of that as a one-in-one-out type expenditure. Transfers in can be a little bit misleading, because of the way the state requires the city to account for its funds, we have to put it up here as a source of revenue. But really what you're seeing are those occasions when we need to move money between funds. A good example would be that we have funds that come in to the public safety loan account, but in order to actually step on public safety, those would then be moved into a general fund or other account ready, then be deployed. This is one of many areas where I'd be happy to invite colleagues who are a little bit more familiar with the day-to-day details of this, to shed a light, council light, on how that works. The bond proceeds account for the next largest chunk of revenue. Again, we're going to see a little more bonding activity now, if we have the CSO activity underway, followed by local income taxes, intergovernmental transfers, which would mostly be state and federal funding, as well as category of other revenues, which includes things like loan repayments, pilots, payments and moving taxes coming in from our utilities, and miscellaneous other taxes. Similarly, I wanted to give you first a high-level view of citywide, so we're not just looking at general fund right now, we're looking at all of the expenditures that are made by the $260 million enterprise in this city of South Bend. I want to give you a sense of where that's going. Providing water and wastewater services accounts for the largest portions. Again, that's something that is going to be on a level where the funding comes in, because that's a service that we charge for. Exposed is, for example, public safety, which of course is a service that we do not charge for, and accounts for the next highest category of spending at just over $76 million. Economic development activity accounted for 17% of outlays in the actual numbers coming back from 2012, followed by culture and recreation, engineering and streets, which we've laid out separately from water and sewer, since I wanted you to be able to see what's principally non-revenue generating, public works expenditure, COVID and sanitation, and then a very small sliver of that going into consolidated building, department. Once again, I thought councilmembers might like to see a tighter cut on this by just turning to the general fund. Bottom line on the general fund is the vast majority of it goes to public safety, 83% of, or 52.9 million goes into police and fire duties in the city of South Bend, and then the other 17% is allocated across general government, that would include, well, that would include all of us, elected officials, clerks' offices, administration, finance, legal services, and then the balance being spread from code enforcement, engineering and streets, and culture and recreation, which would include, of course, not all of the parks and recreation funds, because you'll recall a lot of those are outside the town fund. Just a quick message about staffing levels in the city. Bottom line is, they have not changed much. Full-time employees, this is taken as a snapshot, so how many people were working full-time in the city on the last day of the year, 2009, '10, '11, '12? And in 2009, it was 1,116 employees, today it's 1,118 employees. Just to be clear, this is people actually working at the time, and does not reflect budgeted positions, which will always be higher, because there will always be some other turnover, which means that you're going to have folks who have not taken their positions openly, but this is actual people in their positions, drawing salary at the end of the year. I would add that if we were to look at full-time employees, at the end of the year, we'd see about 183, the vast majority of which would be parks, and there would also be some public safety and public works, whom we could think of as more or less permanent on a part-time basis. That number swells substantially above 183 as you go into the summer, where the workforce, the parks, part-time workforce continues before it settles back down to the end of the year. I know a lot of times the numbers can... So, I wanted to be also sure to provide a bit of a breakdown on what those full-time employees are doing, how those 1,118 break down. About half are in public safety, that's police, fire, including civilian employees, followed by enterprise funds, which would account for any of the funds that collect, so I just wanted you to see how that's different with public works, right? The enterprise funds would include those that are collecting bills, water, wastewater, sewer, whereas the street department would count for folks who are ordinarily addressing hot, cold, stryting, snow, followed by parks and recreation, and then balance. So, about half of our workforce is in public safety. That other category, again, that's all of us, mayor, clerk, council, Morris would be in there, Human Rights Commission, we can go over that a little bit later. So, I wanted to be sure I provided a chance to put these numbers in perspective. I know I sometimes blaze over when I indulge my nerdy side and get too much into details of the numbers, but I think a lot of folks are wondering, what is this thing? How are the city's finances? Are they healthy? Are they unhealthy? In government right now, most people, I think, most citizens generally assume, as a matter of course, that the finances of all of their government, state, local, and federal, are terrible. And I want to be sure that the public and the council understand that is not the case in the city of South Bend. As a matter of fact, we have the best bond rating of any second-class city in the state of Indiana. So, I want to give you a little rundown, these are the 15 general obligation ratings we were able to pull from S and P as of the beginning of the year. This is Indiana second-class cities, all the way down to, from East Chicago, which is regarded as one of the least creditworthy, all the way up to South Bend. And this is something that I think we ought to take a lot of pride in, and something where we are pursuing economic development opportunities, that at least some would-be employers and investors are going to consider important, how creditworthy is the city, how well-run are its finances? And the answer is, in the case of South Bend, you will not find a city of our size and past doing any better. On to the next slide. To put a perspective on this, we pulled the S and P report to the land, and tell why it was that S and P regarded us as a creditworthy, second-class city in Indiana. They emphasize the diversity of our local economy, geography, that's what we said.
Can I ask that question on the previous slide?
You don't ask questions with this... It's important. I'll defer to the council president. Look, this is just the report. If you can follow up on the after, if you have to get you any more information you need. So, they stress the diversity of our local economy in terms of the industry mix, the geographic benefits of being where we are, very strong financial operations. But I just want to pause here, because another thing that isn't the sort of thing that our friends in the media will offer, cover, doesn't make for good mixture, but we've had some really terrific financial management and a terrific financial team here. We recently were again awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, which is an award that the Government Financial Officers Association of the United States gives out. My understanding is only 18 local government units in the state of Indiana got it. It's a nationwide award that is presented to Deputy Controller John Murphy for his good work on the last conference of the annual financial report for the city. That's considered to be in line with where it ought to be, they noted that the local education and medical contributions to the economy are very important. They did stress what it would take for us to be, you know, even though double A is best for second-class cities in Indiana, you always want to say, could we ever be double A plus? What would it take to be triple? And they said that two things that are concerned, one of them is the income model of the community. As we know, we live in a community that has folks with different socioeconomic levels, and we are shy of the national level, about 7%. And the second is that we have an unemployment rate that is above the national average. Also, just to be clear on what a second-class city is, that's generally any community that has population over 35,000, the time that it's incorporated, will come into second-class. That means they got an I-member council, that the mayor's not a member of, and an independent clerk. Carmel is one example of a city that is larger in size, but is not considered a second-class city. And as far as I know, they're the only community of any size that shares our net rating. Indianapolis has a triple A, they would be the only first-class city in the state of Indiana. This brings me to the last slide. I want to put this in a little more perspective, going beyond just cities, and beyond just second-class cities. So, these S and P bond ratings, they go to any kind of local government unit, you see them go to redevelopment commissions, school corporations, very common, sometimes even a library authority. So, if you add them all up together, again, we're still pretty impressive. The only triple A government units exist are the state itself and the city of Indianapolis. There are six units of government that have a double A plus, and then 10 that have a double A like we do. So, if you look at that chart, that's just showing you how many local government units we found that have different kind of credit rating. And as you go to the right, that's worse, as you go to the left, it's better. Fewer than 5%, or I'm going to do the math in my head, certainly fewer than 6% of local government units in our state are to the left of that dotted line. We're one of them, and I'd be very interested in working with other elected officials to think about ways to get that work out, and use it to benefit economic growth and reputation. That concludes my report on the finances and general condition of the city. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Have any other reports of city offices? Second, I will tell you where I am in the opposition.
I have asked to be here, seated in this chair, to conduct the committee of the hold. As we only have one bill in the floor, at this time, I should officially call the committee of the hold to order, and would ask a city clerk, Mr. John Morgan, please give second reading to subject to bill 63-12A.
Public hearing on a bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at 1017 West Indiana Avenue, 1527 Kemble Street, 1531 Kemble Street, and the vacant property south of and adjacent to 1531 Kemble Street.
I will now ask... I'm sorry.
South Bend, Indiana 46614, Councilman and District Number 6 in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. I will now ask that our council attorney will walk the council through any actions that we would need to take prior to receiving this committee's report.
The city council has already accepted the substituted version of 6312A. However, when it is appropriate to make a motion on this, the petitioner will be offering commitments that were discussed at the zoning and annexation committee. At that point, any recommendation would have to be subject to those commitments of the council, so the clerks.
Thank you. At this time, is there a report from the committee?
The Z and A committee met today and sends to the full council a favorable recommendation.
Thank you. The city courts may have this plan.
Good evening, Kristina, with the area planning commission office on the 11th floor of the building. The petition for questioning of zoning change from the MU mixed-use district to the LI light industrial district to allow a manufacturing facility. This is the normal area photograph that you see, and just about every, every zone that comes through the council. In this case, the area has changed quite a bit since then, so this is a Google Earth image, or Google Maps image, to show that, again, the area is, again, outlined in red, but a lot of the houses that were on Kemble Street have been removed, and actually, I think this one has since been removed since keeping its texture. Wider area, the whole, the whole. The view of the site, and then to the north where the recreation would be running. The area is just over half an acre, there's an existing building in the site, 3,000 square feet, and there are two additions, totaling 1,800 square feet proposed, and there are three parking spaces on the south side of the building here along Indiana Street. At your prior meeting, a portion of the south area of this property has been vacated, and during the subdivision process, a portion of it was rededicated, which is this purple area here, is what was rededicated. As one of the owners of the property, the city of South Bend has proposed commitments as to the use, and the following categories will be prohibited, if the council is given to approve these commitments. Those categories are automotive uses, miscellaneous, personal service, public facilities, utilities, and food sales, and so forth. To the north is vacant land, zoned as a two family, two-family district. To the east, across Kemble, is a small business, zoned MU mixed-use district. To the south is an apartment building, zoned NF1 urban four-door multifamily district, and to the west, is a bigger zone, NF1 urban four-door multifamily. Come to the favorable recommendations from the area planning.
Thank you. Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Thank you so much. We're now here from the petitioner, we ask that you state your name and your address for the...
I'm the issue board chair, this is a city 6143, Tom Schrock here in South Bend, representing the city of South Bend and the other owner, which is down in the van, South Bend City. As was given as presentation in the session, and what we're asking for in this particular agenda is resigning to the LI district for the property on the north of Kemble Street. Presently, the property has the zoning classification of mixed-use, there's a manufacturing facility that's known as speaking sanctuary on the site. I'd like to be able to expand this particular dimension, the site line of residence council shows two additions to the existing building that's located on the property. But in order to do that, we have to have the LI classification for the industrial district. We've already been through area planning commission, received a favorable recommendation from them, we also received approval from area planning commission for supplemental development and standard variances for the property. The site line, as Chris had mentioned, has a building that'll be approximately 4700 square feet that sits on the site, once they do the two additions on the property. They have approximately three employees that are working on the site. What they do is manufacture, or call them brewers, or the food processing industry. The sales for last year are approximately $1 million, and in order to make these particular types of equipment, is a very specialized field, there's only a couple in the streets in the United States that actually do it. They produce maybe four room brewers a year, they each probably exceed about $250,000 each. So, they'd like to be able to expand this location at any length for several years, and with council approval, we'd be able to add those additions to the building. If there are any questions, please.
Councilmembers, do you have any questions? Thank you so much. At this time, we'll move to a public hearing portion. Is there anyone present wishing to speak with the court, on purpose to bill 63... Is there anyone present wishing to speak in support of purpose of bill sixty-three dash twelve A? Anyone present wishing to speak in support of this bill? Seeing no one, is there anyone present wishing to speak in opposition? Again, I see no one. The public hearing portion is now closed. We're moving to council portion.
Subject to the written commitments, as on file with the city clerk.
If they move a second and all goes in favor of the motion, may I hear your vote? Both oppose the motion here. This bill, as amended, substitute amendment, substitute bill sixty-three dash twelve A, will be sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation. Now, the lights entertain the motion to resolve.
Second.
If they move a second and all goes in favor of the motion, both oppose the motion here.
Second. Third reading, sixty-three twelve A.
Third reading, audit bill amending the zoning ordinance for property located at ten seventeen West Indiana Avenue, fifteen twenty-seven Campbell Street, fifteen thirty-one Campbell Street, and the vacant property south of and adjacent to fifteen thirty-one Campbell Street, South Bend, Indiana, four-six-six-one-four, Councilmanic District Number Six in the city of South Bend, Indiana.
The motion to amend this was not carried out.
Second. On favor? Any opposition? Now, the motion for the amendment.
The motion, again, if you are looking to pass, it would be a motion to pass, subject to the written commitments, as on file with the city clerk.
Second.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furick.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Lewis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furick.
Aye.
President Deere.
Aye.
Nine eyes.
Let's go to first reading of seven thirteen.
First reading, audit bill of the common council of the city of South Bend, Indiana, amending the maximum salary and wages of certain non-bargaining employees of the city of South Bend, Indiana, for the calendar year 2013 and appropriating two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and seventeen dollars from general fund number one oh one.
I'll make the motion. It goes to personnel and finance for second and third reading, public period for two, twenty-five thirteen.
Thank you.
The motion, a second all favor of that?
Aye.
Any opposition?
Nay.
Third party. Call to that.
What moment?
He needs to speak with you in a pass. Then just one second please. Wait, wait, wait. What is that? What is that? I'm not seeing anything. What are you doing?
Colleagues, what I was trying to get across, trying to find out before I did this, something that I wanted to find out, how does it work when a deal is not allowed to go to a committee for its vote? And the reason why is because of all the issues that we are facing here with residents are underwater, just all the things that we've gone through, not going to go to the organic. This deal particularly is one that's going to be raising salaries for certain industries.
The thing is, while I'm asking questions, I'm trying to understand. So, Mr. Third Party, we have a lot of stuff.
This is a vote to set for second and third reading on February twenty-fifth.
And we're going to two first-time plans.
Okay. Mr. Henry Davis.
Nay.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furick.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Aye.
Vice President Oliver Lewis.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furick.
Aye.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
President Deere.
Aye.
Eight, I mean, seven eyes, two nays.
Proceed on, finish. This may have a motion for thirteen twelve.
Motion for thirteen twelve to open public safety and health for February twenty-third.
Second. The motion, one second. On favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Now, may I have a motion for, before we proceed to that, I will turn it over to our council attorney regarding bill thirteen fourteen.
There's a Scrivener's area number one for eleven B. It should be amended bill thirteen fourteen, which was adopted by the city council on January twenty-eighth by a vote of eight to one. The mayor then had the opportunity to either approve that legislation by signing it or vetoing that legislation and returning it to the council with a message, again, using state law language, announcing his or her veto and stating the reasons for that veto. The mayor did send a letter to the council. At this stage, the council has the opportunity to basically override that veto, but they must have a two-thirds vote to take that action. If they fail to take that action, the resolution is considered defeated.
All right. Seeing that, we have a motion. Most to override bill number thirteen.
Amended.
Amended bill number thirteen fourteen.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
That is a vote call.
Okay, we'll call vote.
Mrs. Shea.
Aye.
Dr. Furick.
Aye.
Dr. Warner.
Nay.
Vice President Davis.
Aye.
Councilmember White.
Aye.
Mr. Furick.
Nay.
Mr. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Henry Davis.
Aye.
And President Deere.
Aye.
The vote is seven to two.
All right, thank you. Proceed, new business, any new business before the council, just start.
Sure, and I don't want to cause any conflict because I'm going to have to ask this question. When dealing with the council and yet elected officials who are here or elected by the people, I'm just a big concern about the heavy-handedness of our council leadership. If there's a council person wishing to ask a question because their district is concerned or that person's concerned, I think that a council person should have the ability to ask that question without being cut off. I feel like that is responsible and I feel like that is proper courtesy or even self-respect to those who can come and show up for these meetings, that a council person can be told not to talk anymore. This is rude.
Councilmember Davis.
This is a vice, I mean, I'm not done, this is the same thing I'm talking about.
As the parliament chair in front.
That is out of order. That is out of order. You can always take a motion to override the chair, whether it be councilmember White,
she has committed the whole chair, or a councilperson, either. Thank you. That is a proper motion.
Good to know that. Thank you. And this, well, I don't even take any responding to.
You shouldn't.
Well, the proponent will be first show up on time at a committee meeting.
Well, I mean, I have overtime to work, they're not going to go.
We'll have to move it to the floor. Anyone wants to speak to the council this time for anything we did not talk about this evening, we may do so. But we would ask you, we would ask you if you're coming up to the podium, name and address if there is something specific you would like us to follow up. We have four there at that table, so if there's something that you want this council to follow up, please fill it out and give it to us after the meeting. If not, you can step up to the podium before we have any business. I wasn't, y'all were talking, I wanted to throw something forward. Okay, all right, thank you. Just go ahead. First of all, I would like to thank all of our council members who have come to our different meetings that we've had to discuss the challenges of those of us in the sixth district who have been dealing with the new ethanol issue, the new energy plant. I'd like to thank the council members. I'd like to thank a special thank you to Eric Turbaugh, our public works director, and he's putting a lot of time, and we must thank him for that. And we will be, at least from the chair, will be following up with recommendations that we will be sending a letter to the mayor and to the redevelopment commission, outlining some of our ideas and plans. You have, who live in the area, will be conscious of it, to at least give some solutions, some alternatives to the mayor, so we can help resolve this matter as soon as possible. Because we need you here tonight and because you keep melting snow of yesterday and rains. Several of my folks have been brought on this all day. So we talked about it this afternoon in our public works committee on the miscellaneous, and we definitely want to send a letter to the mayor so that can be dealt with because there's, under redevelopment, there's three people representing the mayor, two representing the council, and we want to at least seize the mayor's delegation, council delegation, and come up with some ideas to help fund this situation as soon as possible. So thank you for that, and we look forward to working with the administration to resolve this problem. Okay. Same rules apply for a privilege of the floor, if you have three minutes.
Thank you, council. My name is Senator Brown, Cincinnati United for Better Government, South Beach, South East, Indiana. And I want to commend Mr. Davis and the council for the hard work they have put in and working with the officials there. And I'm very pleased to see some of the councilmen that are in that area trying to help the people. They have a pride out there. And Cincinnati United for Better Government also is going to take this fight out and see what we can do by trying to back the facts of the law. One other thing I had, I'm not even to go through it this evening, because we always say Cincinnati United, when it comes before the council, don't seem to have all their facts right, and I took that over doing the research. Because I'm the chairman, and everything falls on my shoulders, I'm a little sure when it comes to the council, my facts are factual. That's my goal for twenty thousand thirteen. And I may not have to live with the secret, but I will be back when you want to hear my facts, sir. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
Jesse Davis, Fuel Box Town, two oh five South Bend, Indiana. I just wanted to say thank you to the council for looking at for the people over there in our own village, and I attended a meeting over there myself, and I followed it in the news, and I saw some statements made that, you know, there was issues with spending public money on private, you know, issues. And the mayor himself, whether it was Mayor Lakeyer, Pete Moore Judge, and then after numerous occasions, talking about taking our tax dollars and investing our tax dollars in public and private partnerships. If we better have a partnership that needs to be formed and our public dollars to be spent on a private issue, this is a major issue that needs to be solved. At the meeting, I brought up the issue about building codes, and I know Oliver Davis has looked into that. I install septic systems. We're living in one of our key factors whenever we excavate is water drainage. And I said at the meeting, there's maps that are hundreds of years old that will tell you that that's a flood plain. So when this builder went to the building department and said, hey, I need permits, and they looked over these designs and realized this guy wanted to dig nine-foot basements, full-size basements, someone at that building department should have thrown a red flag up. Somebody dropped the ball. That's part of the city. The city needs to make sure they stay involved here and help as much as they can and stop pointing their fingers at New Energy and Garden Homes who are bent on a business. I understand they can look into suing the insurance company for Garden Homes, but do a little bit of research and find out if anybody from Garden Homes was sitting on any committees within the city when those permits were issued.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wants to speak to council? If you would, everybody else who wants to speak, just come up and line up there. Thank you. Name and address for the record, ma'am.
My name is Linda Cole. I live at twenty-one oh eight South Moon Street, and I would only like to know why we're called miscellaneous. As far as I'm concerned, everyone in my neighborhood, this is not miscellaneous. This is something that we're dealing with every day. I would like to extend my, come over to my house, all of y'all, I live in my house, or anyone else in my neighborhood's house, for three hours, and come and tell me that you have lived like this. Please, tell me. Tell us what's going on.
My name is just, first of all, twenty-eight oh one, Muscat. We need people who are trusting the garden to make sure things are done and done correctly. In this situation, this is not the case. We have been having problems ever since the ethanol plant has shut down with the septic pumps running every minute just to keep up with a huge amount of water due to the flood points that the ethanol plant used to supply the water to the plant. We have asked the city, Mike Schmo or Gorat, and Gary Jaloff, to develop a fine solution to our problem, to no avail. City of South Bend has had a hip fund that has been slated to be used to demo abandoned homes. We are proceeding no, we have abandoned homes, which proceeding has no revenue whatsoever. By the homes affected by the water problem, by the ethanol plant's closure, produce hundreds to thousands of dollars every year of revenue. We would like to use these funds slated for the use of the demo of abandoned homes to help us with jobs.
Thank you, sir. Anything else?
Hello, my name is Shirley Rice. I live at twenty-two thirty-nine Project. My home used to be where they were saying, um, living place here, fifteen twenty-one Campbell. South Bend came in and wanted to buy a property. I was on the last window door, not front here, in research and trying to find a home. I asked them about this area that I was looking into, and I just want to say that nobody never told me that that was a swamp area or that it was having problems over there, or giving me a problem. So, to me, I feel like it would make sense, it would make sense to me asking for my property then, but I asked them on something, and it should have, you know.
Thank you. Anybody else?
My name is Eric Chachi. I live up by Sixth Route, one of World. This is not my neighborhood, but it is my hometown. I would ask that we continue to monitor the water throughout the spring, to see how high that water table will rise, and continue to keep in communication with residents in the area so that we can keep the lines open and try to come up with a solution to the issue.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Brian Turpin, I'm from the Plaine, Plaine Line up by West County. I offer a quick fix or solution for a problem out there, wastewater area, twenty-nine. That's the only area I'm familiar with. I work with sewer department for wastewater right at the moment. I propose that we get a pumping station out there, use a plug from the tip, whatever little, uh, flooding that we can find, possibly get flooding from. Also, we can tap into the line that's going into the ethanol plant. Tap into it and run it into our main line, and the water will express in three different ways. I've done sewer work, I know how we can solve this problem and make the water flow deter and go down and solve a little of our problems. This is I ask for council to look into, and I ask the mayor, I find it hard, because we have flooding in our basement, we have mold, we have people that are sick, and we need help. This is I ask you guys to look into it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Two nine square dirt.